Roll call.
Chuck.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Helen.
Yes.
Ken. Jerry.
Sure.
And Scott.
Sure.
We'll get the meeting back closer there on the East Mall. Approved, uh, February fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. I will get to it all. Make one.
Second.
Roll call.
Ron.
Yeah.
Helen.
Yes.
Ken. Jerry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
And Chuck.
Yes.
Okay, treasurer's report will be presented and filed for audit. Acknowledged receipt of the library, El Carmelo Airport, HCBD Chamber, RCND Parkport, and Community Center meeting minutes and duplex financial report. I'm gonna recess, recess the city council meeting today as the Community Development Agency, CDA, and that's it.
Seven thirty-three?
Yep, seven thirty-three. Need a motion for that?
Yes, I need a motion in a second.
Second. Roll call.
Helen.
Yes.
Ken. Jerry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Chuck.
Yes.
And Ron.
Yes.
Okay, we're in the Community Development. Jacob Osborne to address CDA regarding two commercial lots in the Galleon Cedar subdivision, block eight, blocks five and six. Jacob?
Well, um, generally speaking, the lots, to me, were a pretty serious problem development-wise because of the society prep that needed to be done, and I was just interested in kind of, uh, maybe doing some of that development to, um, maybe make it a little more, um, attractive for somebody to buy after they could see what potential was. Um, but I see Dave is on the list right behind me here, so that means he probably has an idea already, which maybe he doesn't need me to go in and, uh, create something for him there. So I would defer to Dave here.
Okay. Dave?
Uh, basically, uh, looking at buying both properties, um, and selling fencing supplies for about the last twelve years, and looking to expand that and grow that bigger. Um, Brad is gonna be doing it with me, and the two of us do a lot of security camera business now. We'd like to have a point of presence in town, I guess, as well. And so that's, for that lot, it's not, like you said, the terrain is not ideal for a lot of things. Fence posts, I think it'll be fine, things like that. Um, I think it'd be a good thing for the city in terms of bringing some outside money into town, uh, you know, whether it's stocking it to gas stations, restaurants, or anything else, just another way to generate a dollar. And that's basically what we're after.
We do have a opportunity to put a building on it, assuming we can get an opportunity to close and move forward, so.
Yes.
We would also have that, we already got a contract lined up, if this so would work out for everybody.
Okay. Want to add anything, Jacob?
Well, I've, and they said both lots, and, you know, the only thing that I would've had to say is if they were just going for one lot, you know, you kinda gotta develop that all at once. Um, otherwise, it doesn't really work very good, in my opinion. So I think, I think they're on the right track, and, uh, some would agree with you.
Okay. Discussion action regarding the commercial lots, Galleon Cedar subdivision, block eight, five and six.
This on both lots, Dave, and Fred, are you putting a building on both of them, or?
North end of the north lot.
The building, yeah, would be on the north side.
Up in that, what you call?
Are the buildings to be on both lots, is what I'm thinking?
No, no, it will not be.
But your business will be on both.
But the business will be on both lots.
I think that's what he's asking. Not to, not to interject there, but I think there's a miscommunication.
But the building would be on the north lot.
inventory will be, be everywhere.
Everywhere.
Correct.
Hey, are you finishing that?
That is.
Would like to.
Absolutely our intentions, yes, it's defensive.
And keep it nice and neat, because banks right there.
Absolutely.
That would be the plan.
We're.
Cause you're out on the road.
Yep, and just, just need to.
That always looks pretty decent.
Just need to have a, a, a better area, easier place. It's really nice having the street right there on the north side in terms of the truck has all the room you will turn in the first stop there. You know, we can make a nice big approach, we have a corner easy. It's not really a traffic area, it's just a good place. That's what I don't like about that right off the highway where I'm at, because it's kind of a pain with that JLP curve right there, which is trapped, just hard to see. I think it's a safer location.
So the goal is, is to move possibly to a better location and make it better for everybody. Possibly.
So how big of a building you have?
Probably a forty by fifty or forty by sixty, Scott.
And do you want?
Brand new, brand new deal.
As I understand it, they have made payment on this property?
Yes, I do have a check for, um, and I did the forty-nine ninety-five per lot, so I do have a check in hand for nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Well, I guess if you need a motion, I think I'll make a motion that. I'll second that.
So Chuck, motion. Scott, second.
Okay, roll call.
Ken. Jerry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Chuck.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Helen.
Yes.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn, over. And re-.
Okay, hang on. Michael, do you have to draw that up for us?
Maybe we'll have to drop a, a purchase agreement. I mean, is it the same intent as you've done before on this, uh, that, that the project be completed in a certain amount of time or you get?
You need to agree on amount of time, I think, cause there's no stipulated time, is there, Michael?
Not, it's not unless there.
That's the stipulation that you guys put on it.
Yeah. I mean, if that's what you want.
You'd have to build on it in one year, isn't that the original?
That's what has, that's what's been done since I.
That's, that's, yeah, I would stay with the same. I guess I thought that was the agreement that was on all of them, so.
Yeah.
That'd be fine, though.
Is there any way, and I don't know the answer to this, but, uh, I don't know how fast closing could happen, but obviously, we're in postseason right now. Um, so the sooner we can roll on this, so we could start moving dirt to get said building going, the better for us. Um, within reason, I understand it takes.
Well, I think if, will it take a resolution, Michael? I'm thinking I see a resolution.
In the past, we've done an ordinance confirming the terms of the sale.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, I, I, I think the first thing that needs to be done is it needs to be announced and, and posted, and then there can be an ordinance, I think, confirming.
We'll work on that in the morning.
In terms of, that'd be great, and then, yeah, I guess this.
We could call, we can call a special meeting, but I will be gone. I mean, we can call it, Shai could handle it, but I will be gone all next week for Clark School, so I will be in Columbus that week.
Well, it sounds like you guys are rolling. I think we oughta have a special meeting and let you roll.
Get them going. I haven't seen how long we have to postpone this, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. We'll make our work. Adjourn and return to the city council.
There we go.
Thirty-nine.
We'll get you back. Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Chuck.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Helen.
Yes.
And Ken.
Okay. Leon Thompson regarding Nebraska Damage Act, LB three twelve fifty, Employment of Investments, Roll Back, LB seven seven five. Leon, right here.
My understanding that, uh, this is, uh, a kind of a done on the city and many of the institutions here, and, uh, I guess, uh, the lack of the knowledge of, uh, how it's going to impact the city and, uh, these various institutions, I'd like clarification about what's going on here.
Do you want to hear that? So. The two acts read, um, if you read through them, they're, they're wordy. Um, we have two, I don't know if it's the same corporation, the, the, the paper that I found on the tax credits that are being reversed, um, the one that I found was for Christianson Farms, and it was three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, but to me, that would be, uh, Old County would be the county, probably a judgment against the county. So businesses can go back. I know Sarah Seid and O'Neil, I talked to her about it, she didn't know anything about it either yet, cause they haven't had anybody do this yet. So anyway, it's an act that, it's a tax incentive act, so that, I don't know if it has to do with, like, business improvement and hiring of employees and businesses that do this and can prove it, can go back then, I think it's within the last ten years, and request sales tax refunds. So right now, the city of Atkinson has one for eighty-four thousand dollars that will start getting deducted in December of twenty twenty-four, and it has one for forty-seven thousand dollars that's gonna start getting deducted in October of twenty twenty-four. Um, if the amount of the refund exceeds twenty-five percent of the city's sales and use tax receipts for the prior fiscal year, the deduction will be made in twelve equal installments beginning thirteen months after the payment is made. So I'm not sure if this is gonna come out in twelve installments, or if we're gonna get hit with all forty-seven thousand dollars in October. Um, we have no say over it. Um, if anybody wanted to fight this, they should've contacted their legislature back when it was being talked about. Um, and I don't know how much, um, I really don't know how much this can come back and affect us, but it will affect our LB eight forty program, it will affect our library, and we also have a portion of that sales tax that goes to our wastewater treatment plant payment that we make every year. We make a big interest payment, and then we make a large payment payment. Um, it, there's no control, we have no control over it whatsoever. Um, they apply to the state, the state either approves it, they've met all their, there's like certain tiers. There's like a tier one, a tier two, a tier three. Shai's looked it up probably a little bit more than I have. Um, but if they meet all the requirements, they, they can have part of their sales tax refunded. And so all we can do is adjust.
Sounds like a negative economic development program dictated by the state.
There's, at this point, there is absolutely nothing that we as a municipality can do to fight it, and we are not the only ones that are in this.
I'm sure.
And, and whether it's, you know, it's gonna affect small municipalities like us more because we, if Omaha gets a forty-seven thousand dollar sales tax adjustment against it, it's dropping the bucket for them. Yes, it will hurt them, but it is not going to hurt them like it hurts Atkinson.
Sure.
So whether this was something that they thought tax incentives would help bring business into the state, you know, in some of the bigger, you know, metropolitan areas, I don't know. I'm hoping that next week we cover some of this, um, where people I have seen out on our listserv, people are asking questions about it. I'm kind of hoping that next week I will learn more, because we need our legals down at, in Lincoln to explain it to us. It's, it's too wordy for us to, to make heads or tails out of, really.
Is this likely to be a, a long-term item, or is this an election year, uh, try to draw something out?
It was a state statute that was passed, so until the statute is repealed, it's here for as long as that statute is there. So.
Well, so we as individuals could go down to Lincoln as an example and, and make an appeal, uh?
Where it's not on the floor being discussed, you probably can't, you know, approach the floor there, but you can probably contact your, your local representative, you know, write a letter, whatever, you know, to ask them, you know, but as far as, again, unless they go in and amend it, or go in and do something with the statute, there is just absolutely nothing we can do about it right now.
What are some of the qualifications to apply for that?
Well, I sent you out that information, but, and then I sent this out. This is the statute that it.
I remember we talked about it a long time back, yeah, I could've went and looked at it.
The tiers, there's different tiers, there's. For lack of a better word, Michael, I'm sorry, it's got a lot of legal speak in it.
You mentioned a legal down in, in Lincoln. Could you explain that, please?
We have a league of municipal, uh, Nebraska municipalities that we have access to. We pay a fee every year to belong to them, and then we have access to their lawyers, um, to answer questions like this, or to, um, employment questions, zoning questions, um, anything that we might need. They usually refer us back, they give us the broad, and then refer us to our local attorney. So I mean, it's not something that they get real involved in, but I mean, they're, they're to answer questions, but as far as the, on the local level, they want you to answer your local attorney.
Yeah. I know.
I think, sir, probably your best bet, if you're looking for additional information or things you can do, is, is to get ahold of, um, your local, uh, representative in the UNCAMP, or if you're here in, you know, Atkinson, Old County, that would be very decay, um, uh, and see if we can get more information from him, maybe even set up a meeting to discuss this, and, um, if you have concerns about it, express those, uh, to, to the legislature, because as Shelley said, unfortunately, as the city government, there's, um, nothing, uh, nothing that we can do to, you know, mitigate, uh, the effects of, of this act, or these acts, I guess, or more.
You'd rather sit down then. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Okay, number twelve, Ron Olson regarding water damages at residence on Porster, you phoned us?
Okay. Moving back, regarding the damage at four oh eighty squirrel, I have a couple of questions, uh, two for Gary. Gary, how long did it take to shut off water?
Gary, yeah. You don't have an obligation to answer questions that I'm gonna ask you, and that goes for any council member and city employee.
Okay. So I'm gonna assume it's probably less than five minutes to shut off water. From what I've watched, I was gonna ask how many they do a month, but since I can't ask that now. Um, I did stop at the Sessers office, and in twenty twenty-three, there were forty-one houses sold in Atkinson. They said, a lot of those residences were, like, parents basically transferring it on to their kids or whatever, for when they got older. Um, some of them were businesses, some of them were empty lots that didn't even have utility services on them. I said, okay, so we figure, I take that out of twelve, we'll save three and a half to four properties a month in Atkinson alone are sold in twenty twenty-three. And then, my next thing was, Michael, you told me to, uh, talk with an attorney, so I talked with two, the local one, and then our personal attorney, and both of them told me to do the same thing, told me to go get an estimate, and have somebody look at the damage, and go get an estimate. Um, Brent Kelly told me that it'd be no different than if, say, somebody in the county, they're driving the snow pile, hits a vehicle, causes damage, they tell the person, submit an estimate, and we'll submit it to an attorney or something. So I did that, and went today to Atkinson Lumber, and follow me back up. I had Dan Ruda come over and look at it. Um, that shower faucet is damaged, and he believes that that's about the only damage we got underneath in the basement area, and it's all mostly PEX water line. So he said that helped a lot, because the, the PEX expanded, and it didn't appear to have any damage to the water lines. He said we really wouldn't know until we fixed the shower faucet, got water and made sure, but he said it doesn't look like there's any damage. I had Truman go over and look at the, um, furnace and the water heater. Truman said it doesn't appear to be any damage, doesn't think they're damaged. He said we got lucky because of the drain in the basement. So I went this morning and got an estimate for a shower faucet for Atkinson Lumber with tax, it totaled to a hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents. I spoke with Ryan, who said when he gets back from deployment this spring, he would be more than willing to put the shower faucet in and not be charged for labor. When I spoke with Truman again, he said he spoke with several of the council members, that they've approached him about it. And we closed on the property on December fourth of twenty twenty-three. Truman called and spoke with Cheryl on December eleventh, and when I came in on January twenty-ninth, Cheryl told me that she spoke with Janelle, and Janelle's the one who said that it was sold to shut it off. Well, then, Janelle told me she had called two other times, the final time was on January second of twenty-four, because they had received another bill, told them to shut it off. Truman told them to have it shut off by December fifteenth. And then, of course, I received a bill, found the mess. And then, the graphic beat me to the ordinance, I would've saved it for this one, not last one, but, uh, city ordinance six dash two one six says water service contracts are not transferable. Contracts of water service are not transferable. Any person wishing to change from one location to another shall make a new application and sign a new contract. If any consumer shall sell, dispose, or move from the premises where service is furnished, or if the set premises are destroyed by fire or other casualty, he or she shall at once inform the utility superintendent who shall cause the water service to be shut off from the set premises. If the consumer who shall cause the water service to be shut off from the set premises, um, if the consumer should fail to give such notice, he or she shall be charged for all water used on such set premises until the utility superintendent is otherwise advised of such circumstances. So Truman called the one time, Janelle called twice, and then by the city's own ordinance, it should've never been transferred to another person, cause we gotta come in and fill out an application, like I brought the last time and pay a deposit, like NPPD requires, like Black Hills Energy requires, and they didn't magically turn it over and put it in money. So all we're asking is the city submitted to the, the water estimate, or the faucet estimate, to the insurance, or however you wanna do it, and by the faucet, Ryan will put it in when he gets back from deployment, and hopefully there's no more damage. That's all we ask. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay. Now, thirteen. Don Milner regarding interaction with Councilman Ron Creasel regarding snow removal by his property of East State, you know, East State.
Two years I've had trouble with Councilman Ron Creasel chewing my butt about putting snow on the edge of his banklot. He's got this big habit that the driveway has two posts that were there by the, oh, fiber optics, and that's his driveway, he can't dive in there any other place, but it is no ditch, he could drive through it anyplace. But for two years in a row now, he's chewed my butt about that. The last time he chewed my butt, we had nothing to do with the snow, but I still got a butt chewing, and I want a public apology from that character, and not to be chewing my butt about snow. I told him before, when the snow started, everybody's gotta take snow, but he don't have to, I guess.
I, I appreciate your comment, uh, Mr. Milner, but, um, I, it doesn't appear as though this had anything to do with Councilman Creasel's position as a council member. This sounds to me like a dispute among neighboring property owners, and, um, I think that's probably the best way to address it. I mean, if this were something that involved city business, I would understand a little more, but I think this, you know, um, it, it sounds to me like something that's a personal dispute among neighbors, but not necessarily germane to, you know, Ron's position as a council member.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Okay, wow, let's, um.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Number fourteen, discussion action regarding payment of wiring for the Christmas lights.
So I looked it up, and the last time the city bought Christmas lights, there was action about what you would cover, and this was back, way back. I mean, this is what the minute record looked like, okay? So I went back and looked, cause I was trying to find it, our minutes where we had agreed, because I can't go by a head nod at a meeting, it wasn't on our agenda for Christmas lights. So before we said anything, we went to, I went to the minutes to make sure we hadn't approved anything, hadn't done a motion in a second, and I cannot see anything. When I, where I see that they were here, I have those minutes, too, was like back in, yes, that one, was it February? Okay, February of twenty-three, and they were here to talk about, um, the change in, and I think Christmas lights were maybe brought up in there, but it wasn't part of the agenda, so what was brought, what was, was recorded was the change in leadership. So all I need is that if you want us to pay for the different wiring for these Christmas lights, I need a motion in it, and that's why I said action, discussion, action. I need a motion and a second and a vote that we will do it, because if I would've went ahead and done it, I would've done it without approval of the city council.
I will make a motion, Shelley, to pay, or do we have a bill at this time, or?
I think it's like, right now, the one set of wire, the, the extension court, was it like a hundred and twenty dollars, Gary, something like that?
I'd like to make a motion to pay for that.
That bill?
That bill.
Okay. And I think if they went any further, I think they need to approach the council and.
We need an electrician to look at something, to give us an idea what it's gonna cost from here on.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't go, cause I could not find anywhere where there was any action for this set of Christmas lights, that I could find it back in eighty-two or whatever.
Jerry's been on the council, um, talking to Pam Weiner, when the chamber started their fund drive for the new Christmas lights. I have to remember us discussing that, they buy the Christmas lights, and we was, we would see that, that we could get something going with the wire. The way I understood it, a local electrician was possibly going to wire them, don't make that, since then that's changed. Um, I think we should, uh, do like Chuck says, I think we need to try to get a valid value here of what we're talking about, but I think if the chamber has, I mean, I, there's like twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars worth of lights, and it's gonna be here for a lifetime, I think we should.
I'm not saying that, I just said that I needed an action to pay.
No, no, I was thinking, we don't, we, we gotta not have a blank check sign, I think. I know, I think we should.
It should, maybe they came during the public, because I, I went back, guys, I went back five or six years in the minutes, and I could not find anything on the agenda about Christmas lights.
I remember what you're saying, Ron, there was something to that fact, I don't know the exact word. Work with them, I guess. I think a lot of it that night was, there was something with, with the wiring, and the labor was gonna be donated, something like that, and that's changed, so now that might be why they never voted on it.
Maybe, I don't know, but I didn't, couldn't find anything, I couldn't, the only thing I could find in the minutes was this really old one.
I think we need to try to do all we can do to work with them, cause, I mean, it is our Christmas lights, I mean, that's why I know that, that's our local issue, so.
I just didn't wanna do it where there was no action there. So a second? So a second? One second.
Roll call.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Ken and Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, discuss action regarding extending membership to the whole county economic development. Should I want to see?
I'm just gonna talk on my experience with HCD as of, since I've started here. They offer the resources for me to use if I need them. Not saying that every time somebody comes in, I'm trying to straighten them and being like, hey, I need your help doing this. A lot of the stuff I'm able to do on my own, but there are resources there for me and they have been. They, they're not just supporting me, but they're also supporting our local businesses. And most of that comes from them promoting us. On their website, they have a breakdown of each community that's part of HCD that talks about the job, that does the job listings, the attractions, parks, things to do, big events, community assets. And on their Facebook page, they are, they have a huge presence on Facebook too. So Shelley and I kind of talked about it, we broke it down. It's about six hundred and eighty dollars a month to be able to have the resources for our business to, to be able to use. They did have a meeting in February and talked about if we decide to get out of HCD, there's probably gonna be a fee for every business in town to post job listings. All of our, all of our city and town information is going to be taken down off of their website, which I asked HCD to give me a rough estimate or give me a close estimate to what they get over three months. And it was gonna be, and it was the hits on their website alone has over six thousand. Our hits on, our website alone a month has about six hundred, six, eight hundred. But they also have the capability to provide the analytics. They have somebody from here calling in about some, about a business and wanting to know just like foot traffic, location, kind of just a big overview of that. And that's something that we can't give them without having to contact HCD. And so that was not something that we can't provide them, but it's also not really cost effective for us to do that too. I mean, for me to go and get that information, I could spend hours on it and they just pull it up and they know what it is. I know a big talk was, you know, what have they done for us? I think a big issue with them, you not seeing any production out of them, is the fact that we don't, not just me, but they also don't know what takes top priority. You know, what are, what are we looking at trying to do in the next five years? You know, and that's a, an agenda item tonight to talk about. Because for me to do my job effectively and for them to help me do my job effectively, we kind of need that direction as well.
Well, we've discussed this many times over the past couple of months. We had a six-month grace period here basically that was paid for. That's when we decided to drop it. We were paid up for six months. And I guess my feelings on this after reviewing it, talking to you, you being new, for the year coming down the road at least, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we stay in, pay the dues.
HCD is paid out of the LV eight forty program, which is supposed to be supporting our local businesses. So if, if we pull out of HCD, those local businesses lose that portion. They, they don't get that and that's what LV eight forty money is. So I guess that's my, just the budget side of it, that's where that comes from.
I'll second that. So a motion to keep it, Jerry, second?
I got a, a motion in a second.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call. Chuck?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion regarding property improvement grant application for commercial and residential properties.
Yeah, talk.
So after the last meeting, we, Shelley and I kind of sat down. I got into looking at the property improvement application a little bit more. And it's kind of confusing when you take, when you take that application and it breaks it down into commercial, residential on there. But when it comes down with funding wise, LV eight forty doesn't fund residential, the general funds do. And so I think that's confusing. It's getting a lot of people confused, wondering why, why can't LV eight forty pay for it? It's on, it's on the guidelines saying so. So what I did is I just took all the guidelines, it still says the same thing. It just broke out as residential and commercial. So then if somebody comes in, a business comes in, then we can say, you know, we're paying it out of LV eight forty. Or if they wonder where it's coming from, it's LV eight forty. But residential side blocks and stuff like that, that's all coming out of the general fund, which I think is getting confusing. It was confusing to me because I didn't understand it at first, but.
And it is kind of confusing because it all falls underneath that LV eight forty budget, even though it's not funded by LV eight forty. So next year, we can take money out of the general fund and put it into that LV eight forty budget for property, for like residential property improvements. Whatever you as a council decide would be an appropriate amount. So you updated the application?
Yeah, did you put it in there?
I did.
Okay, yeah.
So there's, it looks like this.
So nothing changed? Just at the top, it says residential and commercial.
Well, it's not.
The guidelines are the same.
It's the guidelines, but not the application. I got the guidelines, but not the application.
Right, yeah, we just, we just updated the guidelines. We didn't do anything with the actual application itself. It was just the guidelines. And just because when people come in, that's what we give them. We give them the front sheet, which has the program guidelines on it. And then we give them the application. The application is staying the same. It's just to break it out, to make it a little less confusing on where the funding is coming from.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Discussion action regarding LV eight forty dash one thirty-nine property improvement program for the Atkinson Senior Center for New Flooring, the amount of fifty percent of the project not to exceed ten thousand. The estimated request is two thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars.
You do? Thank you, Ron.
Give a second.
In a second? Scott?
Roll call.
Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, eighteen, discussion action regarding LV eight forty dash one forty property improvement program for Fort Atkinson Armory LLC for new facade at one oh seven South Main Street in the amount of fifty percent of the project not to exceed ten thousand. The estimated request is ten thousand.
Is this the person that, the people that bought the building?
It's not sold yet.
It is not sold?
No, it's not sold, it's still under Dr..
Okay.
There is a buyer.
My question would be, if we get this grant for a facade, the person that buys the building, can they also apply for one?
That's initially up to you guys. I mean, I, I did talk to the potential buyer. And they are in, her and Jared have been talking. And so the facade is, is, they're both kind of working at it to make sure that it is what she, what she wants eventually. But, and I did ask her, you know, like, say that you buy it and a year you want signs. You know, what do, you know, what do you want to do? You know, do you, if we set the parameters on that where we were gonna say, you know, you can't reapply for, for a loan or a grant.
Isn't there something, should I, that if you apply for that grant money and get the grant money on that and you resell within a certain period of time, don't you have to refund like seventy-five percent of that grant money back?
I cannot tell you that for sure.
We'd have to look into that.
Yeah, I have to look at it.
Because I'm not sure either.
Backfire, yeah.
I did talk to her and she said that it's not something.
You have to have, this Michael's building, John had applied for the faucet, but he never paid it, so it was only given one time, so this would be the same way. If one person gets it, the next person I think is just have a lot of.
Because, because the money doesn't come out until the project's done, I think.
Yeah.
Paid for, I heard he's getting voiced out.
It was out, it's out.
Yeah.
My, oh.
Where's this Fort Atkinson looking?
It's one oh seven South Main Street.
That's a, no, Garwood Music Building, isn't it?
Okay.
Isn't it North, the Drugstore, you know, Drugstore?
Yeah, it's the next building.
North Keating, right there.
Yeah.
In my case, I make a motion to approve it. Hold on a second. Sorry, hold on. Roll call.
Helen?
Yes.
Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Yes, Ron?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, now nineteen, discussion action on placement of the Jacob Schmucker statue.
I don't know who met with the community center committee. Was everything okay, guys, or?
Yeah.
Dan?
I think you did spot for.
We kind of decided that we would put the statue on, as you're driving up to the Legion, it'd be on the left-hand end of the flagpoles. They're talking down the pipeline here of maybe adding a second or a, there's four flagpoles there now. They're talking about adding a fifth one for the NSA, NASA, NASA group. And if that be the case, it will go on the opposite end to kind of center everything else right back in, in lieu of keeping everything centered on the front of the building. So I think that the decision for the statue is on the west end of the flagpoles and NSA flagpole will be on the east end. And everything will be back in center. They stand with you. Thanks. My knowledge, they're talking about, they want that done by the, well, they're hoping to have it done by the third, Memorial Weekend.
Does the, is the base that it sits on, is that coming with the statue too?
No.
Isn't it on? So it'll just be on, there'll be a different one here or it'll be on the.
Yeah, hopefully.
I mean, they have the most, I mean, they do their own base.
What's that?
Most just say they do their own base.
Yes. It's a whole blue base, hi and tom, judge will work on that. So Ron?
Ron has the motion.
Second. Second.
Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, twenty, discussion action regarding unlicensed vehicles intact in Atkinson.
Well, I, I've been working with Michael on this one. Because apparently our ordinance book has two different statutes that fall underneath of it. So we are working to get this corrected and he's kind of, Mike's, Michael's working on the way to do this.
I did put a memo out that Michael sent me right before the meeting. And it was just kind of explaining, I think, was it the one?
Yeah, there's kind of different, different sections. So there, there's a code section dealing with unlicensed vehicles that are parked on public property. So if something's unlicensed and is parked in the street, you know, essentially it can be towed and impounded. And there's a process to follow there. Another way, or another section deals with unlicensed vehicles on private property. And those can be declared a public nuisance under the, under the nuisance segment of the code. And there's a process that, you know, those can be removed or abated just like any other nuisance. If your grass was too tall or you, you know, you had broken windows or whatever the case may be. And in that case, you know, I think the way it would be handled is to follow the same process for though, as, as though it were an unlicensed vehicle on the, on the public property. And there's a process for, you know, giving notice to the owner and they have so many days after which it gets sold at, you know, auction. First pay the city's costs and then the balance has to be held for the benefit of the owner for two years. But I, I can continue to work with, with Jimmy on that. Ultimately, if there are, you know, if it's an issue of unlicensed, you know, vehicles that are on private property, not parked in the street, but just in someone's lawn or something, to be declared a nuisance, it needs to be, you know, a resolution of this council declaring it as such that has to be served on the person, a demand to abate that before the city can do anything about it. But.
Is that, I mean, I don't know how to state this, but if you have a person that has one vehicle there versus a person that has ten, all four apart, junking out, I mean, can, can we say the guy with ten has to clean it up and the guy with one doesn't?
No, it'd be the same for everybody.
That's what I, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I think if you ask about it, there's probably some discretion there, but the tape is courses, you know, because it probably treat every shit pretty well the same.
Twenty-one, discussion action regarding the storage concession stand at the ballpark.
We talked about this in the past several times. We voted to build a new concession stand for the ballpark up there. That time that we talked about tearing the old one down and putting the new one in there. I did not know what condition the old one was, I went up, we looked at it. I cannot understand why we would tear the old one down. We need storage for stuff at the ball field. I feel that that building is plenty repairable for a storage building. I guess I'm still where we were before as far as building a new concession stand and putting it to the east of the crow's nest that's in there. They also talked about removing the crow's nest that is there. There's a lot of work done to put that in there and that is a major piece of equipment that I don't think should be moved, but that's my opinion, so.
That's the only other person. That's just what that crow's nest is. Better get all the parties that was involved and all the donations and putting it in, deciding.
That wasn't a cheap deal, I can tell by the way it's built, so.
I guess the, as far as the concession stand, I don't know. If it goes anywhere, it was now, it's the same.
I was just looking at that, the out there to the east.
So is there room for the other one, the new concession stand?
Yeah. We can cut back the size of it, I feel, if we're doing concession stand only because the original one we talked about was concessions and storage.
Right, so make it smaller. So.
Certainly look at the storage side of one up there now. There might be a leak each problem.
But yeah, I, I think there probably is wrong, but I think that building is plenty repairable. Sit on concrete, so.
So what I probably need is, I need, because you approved in the August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes to approve the purchase of a new concession stand and storage facility, I think I need you to rescind or to, isn't that how I say it? Repeal that vote and then. And then you would have to, I don't know if you would vote tonight on cutting, or, how do I do that?
We're, we're not against them, we're, we're not basically against the building, the new concession stand.
Just smaller.
We just, I mean, I don't think, because I was mentioning that night, but at that time, they were going to tear the old one down and, and, I mean, if we leave the stand and get a new concession stand, it's fine, but.
I think, I think I would just move the table this tonight and talk to, you know, the athletic club or the, you know, whomever, get an idea of what a revised plan would look like and you can just vote on that.
What size they would want or they.
I would, which I would, if all of them are constantly to do their ones, balls using, kind of like you have the time for two.
Well, they were gonna have Jeff Kraus's class do it up at the school, but they never took down the old concession stand for that to happen, so I don't know if that is still the plan and then Kraus's class in the fall would do that?
I still got, I still got a party that, that we decide we want that open out or they're gonna take it.
So just table it, Michael.
I think, yeah, I would just have, ask for a motion to table the action on that until next month. I'll make a motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Hold call.
Um, Chuck?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
Okay, discussion action on rodeo grounds lease for twenty twenty-four.
I talked to the alarm, um, they are going to get back on me, got, get back with me, um, because they have to do some looking into this because there might be something out there where if you charge like a fee for them to have a key to get into the rodeo grounds, it may, there may, our liability insurance may not cover that and it has something to do with the parks statute that's out there. Um, so until, she did not want to give me a straightforward answer because she says, I really need to check with some people before I can answer this. So I am waiting for her to, she was out last week, um, I'm waiting for her to get back with me, but there may be something there that you can't lock it and then hand out keys. So I don't know how that would affect what she would do. We need to make sure that it does not null and void our liability insurance somewhere. They would still, so like the high school rodeo association and the Lions Club would still have to provide a certificate of insurance for their rodeos. But as far as the everyday people who go out there to practice or whatever, that might affect that.
Okay, so we.
You got high school rodeo coming up fairly quick, um, I don't know if you're gonna table it till April or what you want to do.
What do we need on that basically as an amount to charge them?
There's still, the, the lease, there was a lease, it's still, uh.
It is.
I mean.
So it may be something that you don't, can't change this year. I mean, it asks is for the year and then, cause I don't think you want to rush into this until we find out for sure, cause if we charge the rodeo association a fee, well, that, you know, we need to find out some more information from our liability insurance company before you guys make a decision on this.
But we're not stopping anything though by leaving it as is?
No. No, they can still have their high school rodeo, they can still, you know, have the Lions Club rodeo, cause the leases, like Michael said, are still in effect.
Okay.
But we need, before we make a decision on that, let's get some information first.
Approved payment of Acton Rodeo So- Association for Electricity paid in the amount of four hundred forty-six dollars and twelve cents and repair of Crow's Nest in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thirteen for a total of six nineteen point five.
It's our facility, I think we need to, if the lease didn't cover their paying electricity, it's, I may push right there. I'll second that.
Who's second? Scott?
Hold call.
Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-four. Discussion on economic development goals for the city of Acton in the next five years.
I think it's what we talked last month and just kind of what was brought up earlier about UCD, I think, getting a good idea of where you guys want to see what big projects takes, take priority in the next five years, what, or not necessarily the big projects, but just things that you guys want to see done in the next five years.
And this would just help direct Shai so that she knows how to, otherwise she's going six different ways depending on who wants what, you know? You guys need to come up with some goals, what, what's priority in Acton, bringing young people back, is it developing better housing, is it?
So I haven't went forward, so I got a quote, um, from, uh, Cheryl Hyatt on what it would cost. It's about eight thousand would be the housing study, is what it would cost between resources. Um, I know last time we also talked about like a strategic plan, I also spoke with her about that, um, about updating our strategic plan, it was that in two thousand sixteen. It does need to be redone, I don't, I want to check with her to make sure, but as far as I know, there's no, um, cost associated other than like mailers, cause we have to do a community needs assessment, I mean, we're gonna have to sit down, it's, it's extensive to do a strategic plan, but that might help also get our minds like back on, you know, on our topic, like, once we set up the community needs assessment and see what our community thinks we need, that we need, that might be easier for you guys to decide. So I guess if you want me to move forward with starting the strategic planning, I can do that, it does take a little bit of time, but it's probably about a six month, it's probably, she said around six months is what it'll take us from start to finish to get something together, um, but then, yeah, we're also talking about housing study.
Some of those not real familiar, but some of those certain grants, is that, you need to have studies like that in place before.
So, yeah.
Cause we don't have a current one on file.
You know, so ours is outdated, um, I did speak with Shelby, of course she allowed my attorney to leave, and as of right now, there's nothing big that's coming up that we would miss out on if we didn't do it, but if we're afraid that we're gonna miss out on something, I'm not for it, and it's, it's catch torn to when you go, when you do that, so I mean.
We need to make sure that we don't need to turn around and do it again.
I was gonna say, how long do you apply?
Because we have our planning and zoning and.
Comprehensive planning.
Plan is due in twenty-six, which is just, what, a year and a half away?
And that's, that's.
And you do a housing study with that.
It's probably closer to the upper sixty thousands for us to do that.
Yeah. So that we can get grants.
Yeah, so in twenty-six, this would be, be getting done anyway.
Yeah.
So I think, I think, and I want to double check to make sure, um, that if we do a housing study, I don't think that we have to have it redone when we do the comprehensive plan. When I spoke to Cheryl about just starting, starting that, how we go about it, um, they had said, and CNET had said that, um, she didn't think that we needed to have, we wouldn't have to redo our housing study in twenty twenty-six. Whether we choose to do it and, or wait, I don't know what the right answers to that.
We just need to make sure so that we're not spending the eight thousand dollars back to back.
Yeah.
You know, in one in twenty-four, twenty-five, and then again in twenty-six.
Yeah.
Because it would be budget year twenty-four, twenty-five before we could do it, cause it's not budgeted in this year. Okay, so she's gonna let you know?
Yeah, so she was out last week, they had a, a big conference down in, um, Kansas, I think she said, and so she hadn't very many emails, so just today. So they were gonna, she was gonna look into that a little bit more, but like CNET would be, if we did the housing study, CNET can do all of it, um, we wouldn't have to outsource it really to any, I mean, it's relatively local for us to do that. I know like last time with the, it was included in the comprehensive plan and Miller Associates did it, and they were part of more work, I believe, so.
Miller Associates, they're out of Carney?
Carney.
They're engineers.
Yeah, so.
Or we're basically gonna wait then until we find out more information?
I would say yes, but I think. What, do you see any, do you guys have any ideas or things that even without those or with those, what you guys will see then?
Well, our biggest problem here probably with young people coming back here is daycare.
There was, I thought we were waiting on that.
So there's, there's, I think some children are family school, I spoke with Jim Brennan about it and it's kind of, as far as I know, since I talked to him just last week, it's tabled right now because they're looking for a space. Um, they don't, they talked about moving one in and it was really expensive and they didn't want to do that, and then he said that, you know, they, they thought that they had a house and then when they went to go jump on it, it was already sold. So now I think they're still, they're looking for some things, but, um, it's just, it, they're kind of working on it and he's just been keeping me in the loop if they find things or if they, they see something that they want to jump on right away. Um, I know that building that Jarrett has over here that we just approved the pit for is potential for childcare there. Um, just from helping with the buyer, it's potential for that to be something like a childcare, so that's an option too, maybe eventually, but that's, um, so.
But we definitely are, are trying to get a grant to do the state street sidewalks.
We need to get that, we kind of had tabled that, Ron, because of, we had so many, um, bonds out there, um, right now we had a lot of money owed. We are starting to pay off, um, I think Need Act Road will be paid off this year and we paid off the sewer jet. Um, we needed to get our debt down because we didn't have anything anymore to use as collateral. So we are gonna have to start looking at, um, what street is priority and the one street up by the school has to have a drainage study done, but Miller said we really didn't want to do a drainage study until they put in their new bus barn because more pavement means faster water. So right now, everything is kind of hinging, you got things hinging on one another there. So Miller said there will probably be grants available for it, but the drainage study we have to have done, we're gonna hope that we can find a, a grant for that because that is going to be quite spending. There's just a lot of things we have to do before we can get into that street. But they know that it is on our radar, that it is something that we want to get done.
I've had, I've looked, um, for the brass department of transportation, I have been kind of browsing their website, um, for grants and stuff for potentially other streets if we, if we have a while before we're gonna work on the one up by the school, um, I haven't found anything super, uh, promising, so that doesn't mean I won't come across some things soon.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, approved delinquent utility report.
Down.
I didn't even see it. No, Cheryl prints it, I missed it in our meeting, so.
So we need a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve it. Helen's got the motion. Do you second it?
Hold call.
Helen?
Yes.
Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay, approved claims as prepared.
Okay. Ken? Jerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And Helen?
Yes.
Discussion action on moving April meeting to April eighth.
Um, the only reason I'm asking for that is because April first is the meeting date, would be the actual meeting date for next month. Um, we will not even have invoices in yet to present to the committee for approval, um, we don't start getting those invoices in till about the second, third. So just to make it a, otherwise we're gonna.
Be way off.
Yeah, we're gonna be way off if we do it on the first, so I'm asking the council move it to the eighth. So we have a better.
If I make a motion that we move this next council meeting to April eighth.
Now, I'll second it. Hold call.
Jerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And Ken?
Kenny Muntling report, it's from the Department of Supervisors, Library, PD, Water, Sewer, Street Parks, Woodlot and Cemetery, Community Center, Fire, Civil Defense, and Police.
Sewer, I've got, we, we, every year we try to, uh, do a few animals and animals, make them in, drop them in, and re, reline them and do the new tub. I got a price, they're gonna be coming in, maybe this summer sometime, about eight thousand dollars. To do two, two of them.
You gotta each carry or is that?
Both, that's all, both, okay. When we try to light it up, if they're gonna do something, or a basin, so they're all, you know, they're just kind of going down the road.
Jerry?
On the streets, that mud rock that we put on, uh, what is it, Hill Press Road, south of that, 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 that really nice. And, uh, I think we should put some more of that on some of our, or head there, travel, work straight. Can't do the hall, maybe all, maybe not even all of one street, but we get, well, it's like ground law, last year that ground was just.
Disappeared, yeah.
It was gone.
Like West First or something like that, or.
Yeah, yeah, kind of there by, uh, north of Catholic Church and head, head, uh, west for a couple, three blocks. And possibly the one on South Madison as you head to the treatment plant, I guess a lot of traffic with, uh, grass and leaves and stuff. And maybe get around the first bend, just have to see how far it would go. I think it would be a good idea.
Too much use of the.
I knew this might ask that, I, I had a talk to Bart, with that all?
I know, I don't know how many loads you.
Right, right. And then I would like to, uh, you know, give it a street committee and kind of take it, get it in any kind of, on approach. I talked to Bob Law, and then he said it wouldn't happen, it's a, it's a fourth inch wide, but we won't have to do some prep work for it. And I'll give it to you guys in around now. In the soup, you know, workers, workers making leaps and bounds down. They're balancing links.
Okay. Fire, Nicky, yes, fire, okay. Jimmy?
No.
Everything?
I am gonna be gone next week, all week, I leave Sunday, and I'll be back on Friday for Burke School down in Columbus. Anyway, I will have to do payroll before I leave, so what I'll do is just pay them as if they work their Monday, Tuesday, and then we can make the adjustments on the next payroll. I really don't want to come back Tuesday after I'm done with classes from Columbus and do payroll and then head back to Columbus yet that night. I really don't wanna come back Tuesday after I'm done with classes from Columbus and do payroll and then head back to Columbus yet that night, so. Yeah, that's what I would have to do. So I think I'm gonna do it Sunday af, Sunday morning before I leave for clerk school, that way everybody's paid, they'll still get paid on Friday. It's just that we'll maybe have to make some adjustments in the next pay period. No big deal. Thank you to Gary for that suggestion because I was starting to worry.
I can, I can see it.
Wow, okay.
I just have a couple things. Um, so the CDVG tourism grant that we were looking at doing, um, it's trying to fizzle out, you guys, there's too many, um, um, requirements, too many new requirements that they're requesting. So I've kind of been working with Josh, we've been talking a little bit about other potential options, maybe number of. So right now I think we're just gonna do what we can and make, make it functional up there and then maybe next year we can look into something else. I talked about the website last time. We're looking at potentially using a different platform, that's not sucks, it's called West Point, they're out of West Point. Um, they were, I met with them just this, this last week on, uh, Friday and they're gonna work up just kind of a website. Ours is just, there's nothing, essentially there's nothing wrong with it until you have to start looking for things or until you just need something and then things are hard to find. And on the backend, there's a lot of issues, um, that I'm having with just getting in contact with anybody to help me to update things or just give me a like rundown on how things kinda go. So I did talk with West Point and they were just gonna kind of give us a, work up a, a platform and give me a quote on what something like that would cost and we talked about it, probably wouldn't be able to be done until next fiscal year, which, if we would like to go that way. Um, the signs are finally fixed, if you didn't notice. That took.
More time.
It's a bit more time that I would like to admit, um, but he did get everything fixed and he did mention, and this is just kind of, you can put this in the back of your mind, potentially down the road, um, and a wireless option for the sign down there, so it will connect to the laptop that we use, um, and then they can do all of their troubleshooting, they don't have to come here, they do it all through just the wireless that they have. Um, right now we're paying a lot in service calls to get them down here, um, and so eventually that might be something that we wanna look into. Um, they troubleshoot, order the part, and then the service guy comes in and does it, but that, that eliminates two, at least two, sometimes three trips to get down here, get it fixed, and it takes half the time. Um, so that was gonna look to be roughly around three, three or four thousand dollars to get that, that updated, um.
And then she wouldn't have to go to.
Yep.
The library with the la, or not the library, but down to the park with the laptop to put the information on the sign.
I just sent it.
She can do it right here from the office.
I was gonna ask that, it's still that way, yeah.
Yep, um, and then we, so working on the NSBA, the NSBAA grant, um, I'm working with a couple different people on getting that going and getting the applications in, so, um.
You might have to explain a lot of this.
So what it is, it's, um, it's just a new grant that, that they've rolled out, um, for new and existing businesses for like startup costs or, um, existing, existing businesses to help pay for, um, like any of the fees that they would have to pay for like for payroll and stuff like that, like any behind the scenes stuff. It also is an option for people, like if they have to remodel the inside of their business or something like that, you know, that buys a new building, um, if they have to remodel, then that will help pay for some of that as well. There are some pretty, pretty strong stipulations, they're, they're pretty, um, there's some pretty good parameters there, but I think we've had a couple people that have applied and so far, hopefully within the next couple weeks, we'll know for sure if they've been approved or not.
Is that just for businesses again?
Yep.
We can't get anything for residential streams?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, not with this one.
Does it, so we have the ID for you?
Yeah, well, this is just rolled out on, um, under the grow with Nebraska, um.
You see what I mean?
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
This is a state funded thing, this has, this is money they're getting directly from state in Nebraska?
Oh, yeah.
Um, and then I attended the market tech conference, uh, at the end of February and that was very interesting. It was a long day, but it was, it was a lot of fun and I met a lot of people, a lot, a lot of people. And, um, it was nice to kind of get my name out there, the new face to Atkinson Economic Development. Millraise Park, I'm working on the billboard ads for that, should be up by the end of the month, I'm just about done with it, so I'm just gonna put those down and get it out there. That's it.
Okay, I guess need a motion to adjourn.
Who made the motion to adjourn? Okay, I thought Jerry did, sorry, I can't hear.
We should speak up.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck? Ron?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And Ken? And Jerry?
Yes.
Okay. At eight thirty-six?